This conference will now be recorded.
Questions before we vote, okay? Okay. On the minutes on page eight, we're talking about road painting districts, road painting, it says here we're going to stay away from neighborhood streets unless HOAs want to paint. Is that really something we want? I mean, is that how we're going to do it? I mean, they're all our streets. Can we just paint all of our streets?
Well, the situation we're in is we have no streets within our HOAs that have striping. So unless there's an HOA that presents a request to us as a district, I'll bring it to you all to try to get some uniformity. But right now, we do not have a plan that we're going to send a street painting crews out into the entirety of Sun 'n' Lake, specifically the neighborhoods. We're not doing those unless those folks come to us and say, we want a center stripe, we want an edge stripe.
So are we going to repaint or update the paint of all the stripes that we have throughout the district?
Well, yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, that's happening. That's district plan, that's crosswalks, speed bumps, even in HOAs, we will do those. I'm talking the center line, edge lines.
Well, I just, when I read it, it sounded like.
I got you. Okay.
So that was my line of ideas. The other thing I wanted to ask you about, and I can't approve, I want to vote no on this, so you know, the treasurer's report, it still does not have last year's numbers in it. Infomart, obviously, is not up to the challenge, it's been three months, reports me as worthless. The plan that's in there is also worthless, as you all know. It's just a mathematical formula, it's no good to anybody. But it did raise something that I was kind of curious about. When I looked at the revenues for the water.
Sure.
We went from, of course, there's no last year to really compare to, but the month before was 91,000, and then in October, it jumped up to 500 and somewhat 1,000, and I thought that was a rather unique number. Is that correct?
I'm with you. I thought it was typo myself. We've reached back out now, we did some initial analysis, and we're digging into it some more with Infomart. We build a little bit late, so you're having a combination of possibly some October and November month numbers in there altogether. That's a small part, very small part. The reality is, and we knew this was going to happen, once you start charging for actual water use, people are paying for actual water use. And we've been working for many, many years off an average formula from five, six years ago. That's when the average was set. So now we are at a point in time where we're getting actual reads, actual costs, actual charges. So yes, it will be, I cannot guarantee that's going to be the increase, nor say it's going to be the increase monthly, but I would like to see next month's number and then during Q, this is the new revenue stream that we need to do a budget amendment adjustment if needed.
No, I understand that, but that number can't be right. I mean, you're saying you charge some of your average every household $50 more than they ever got, and if we did that, I'm sure you would have heard about it from our.
Yes, but remember, we're also now charging our commercial enterprises accurate water rates.
So you're not sure that number's correct either?
No, no, we're trying to separate the overlap of the bill in October and November. Once I could peel out everyone that paid in October, in November, that's the problem, is that I had some people in October from an October water bill make the payment in November, and everybody's reflected in that number.
So you think the two months is correct?
I think that number's probably in the 300K range monthly would be the ongoing revenue.
Range, yeah. I mean, it's like almost 600,000, so you're saying each month should be about 300?
I think that's going to be the standard setting, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's fine with me, but I can't approve it completely. I would like to remove the treasurer's report.
Okay.
From the consent agenda until we hear back next month as to what should be done. What is the problem with Infomart?
It's on page one and on page three.
Right.
On page one and page three both show the prior year.
That's two pages out of fifty.
Oh, yeah, that's all we, that's all we.
Well, I can't think.
That's all I requested.
We're continuing to work, we've elevated it to the supervisor, that's not the one we deal with day to day, and he has been very helpful trying to help us sort this out. It's a challenge.
Okay. Now you can move.
All right. On the consent agenda, all we are looking at is the minutes of the board supervisors and the golf financials. The treasurer report, we will remove until next month. Right, uh, call the vote.
Supervisor first.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilden.
Yes.
Supervisor Norton.
Yes.
President Herrick.
Yes. Mr. Currie did not attend, he had his meeting scheduled to debate, but he will not be here. He sent his best wishes to all of the ones to have a great holiday season and a good new year. Moving on with the action agenda, and the first one is discussion on operating direction to general managers on district 2024 goals, which will be a discussion on what individual board members or collectively would like to see focused on for the next year. To attach and D.
Okay, so what you have in that big spreadsheet, and we have it on the screen as well, this was our tentative, what I'm calling the district strategic plan. It's a 10-year window snapshot in time of what we lay out our potential revenue streams and expenditures for the 10-year period. This has been adjusted to include the assessments for the wastewater. This has been adjusted to include any investments annually into our reserves. So the numerics at the top part of that product are our best guess, working with finance, working with our accountants, and trying to paint a picture of the financial position of the district moving forward in a 10-year window. There's a lot of theories and thought process of a strategic plan should be a five-year, 20-year. I honestly think the 10-year window, my recommendation, is adjustable enough that's a realistic number, we can really look out 10 years, really, we're revisiting this every year and adding that 10 years. If we start doing pipe dreams of 20 years out, we want to do this, that's truly what it is, is a pipe dream. So I would recommend that we put a lot more energy into a smaller product, we can go less than that. If we go more than that, we'll do it, but I'm not seeing a lot of value in that. We can definitely play with the numbers going out if needed, but that top part is really our guess on the finances. I think with the meter project, with the assessments for the wastewater plant, with how we move some money around into our investments, we'll get a better snapshot, a more refined snapshot for 2024, and obviously, that will impact everything to the right, because we do an analysis of potential 3% increase every year for expenditures and that type of stuff. So those numbers could change to the right. The middle section, the colored section, are the blocks of events, major initiatives that we as a district are either planning, resourcing, getting more information on, waiting for a board final approval. So it's not in stone right yet, but it's, there's a lot of energy either on the staff with outside agencies to be able to present to you all our case, to either approve it or just scrap it in total if you all feel that's not a part of the plan. So don't put too much weight into some of those. Some of those are pretty cut and dry, wastewater plant, the funding for equipment and so on, sanitation loan, we know that's going to happen, so that's pretty firmed up. Between a few of those products in color and then what I call projects on the bottom, that's where these are recommended initiatives in the year that we think they need to play out, that they're taking, they're going to require more than just the GM presenting something to you. I'm having to get either proposals, bids, outside experts to feed it, and then once we present our recommendation on the final example, the clubhouse upgrades I'm calling, the driving range discussion, our parks expansion, once we get some final numbers, we will bring that to the board, obviously, for a decision. But right now, it's really conceptual, we're gathering facts, we're trying to get a lot of feedback from the community, and then I'll present something in the short term to you all when it comes to a lot of this. And then towards the bottom, some of that stuff we do every year, we spend about a quarter million in equipment across all our departments, from mowers to trucks, that's a pretty standard number that we fluctuate with. The waterline replacement, based on comment Mr. Gopin made and others have made in the past, we're needing to invest annually about a half a million in all subsurface infrastructure. So it's really north of the waterlines, understand? I'm lumping in underwaterlines, but usually about a half million of our money that will come either from utility or from reserves, I'll explain where when we execute it. We're needing to do that to not only course correct what we found, what we neglected for many years, but to get everything set to get some lifespan out of them for the next 15, 16 years. So that's where you see a big chunk annually for a couple of years there, we're needing to throw at it. And then some of the other ones, you see a spread there, we know we're going to have to do some golf cart upgrades slash replacements in the near future, when that contract, it's not a contract we own, when we find we've reached the five-year life cycle where the warranty's up, we're going to have to bring to you all a decision, do we just ride out the equipment until it drops, or is it time to get another piece of equipment that's under a warranty? That'll be a discussion I'll bring to you all. Right now, that's about a million dollars, if you, worst case, for 100 carts at that point in time, but that's down the road. We still have two more years of our warranty. So the equipment we have right now is under a warranty, we're not paying anything for it, it's under a warranty for two more years, so we're good with that. But I see the train wreck two years from now, we need to figure out our plan, what we want to do. Do we want to buy stuff, rent stuff, lease stuff? We got to figure that out. So that's where you see that number there, and then we'll talk the greens. We have very good courses, they have not been truly addressed to the proper depth that we need for many, many years, if at all, you know, 10 years plus. I'm talking, we're doing a lot of surface work, they look good, we're seeing some issues across our greens, but the reality is, to maintain these things to the level of championship level that we want, as well as to give us a lot of years out of it instead of some short fixes annually, we're getting to a point that we're needing a life cycle replacement of our greens in the future. All right? We have fixes that we're going to recommend, if we just want to put Band-Aids on it, we have that. Jimmy has some options, we're investigating that. If we want to continue to do that, we continue to do that. And then we have greens that are acceptable and good, but you're going to start seeing some changes in our greens over the years if we don't address it appropriately to get to the level, the depth level we need of a good sub-soil surface, a good subsurface, and then build on it like we're supposed to be doing. So that's a discussion that we need to have in the near future, and there's a cost to doing that when you shut down a course for a period of time to do that. And then the one addition there is the driving range. Have a good driving range, very well utilized, we generate revenue on it, we're doing some investigation for the utilization or the upgrade of our driving range to what are more digital, not the entire driving range, a more digital side, maybe 20 days, keep the others open for what they're now, but we are in a position in central Florida that there's no competitor near us within 45 minutes to an hour that could offer something that we could offer and immediately produce revenue, immediately. That's the digital use of our driving range, where you sit there, you have the screens, you do your shoots, you do your hits, and it's being tracked and all that fun stuff. You play games on it, you have parties on it, and that type of stuff. But it's still so used for professional play, to be able to practice your game and to get better at it. It's an interesting niche that I think would make a great benefit, there's no one doing it near us, and almost immediately, we will get revenue back with a very minimal investment upfront. Again, researching it, getting some facts, getting some numbers to present it, and if it's something that just says, nah, we're not really interested right now, that's fine, we'll move on to the next one. But those are some of the projects initiatives that we're working as a staff to paint a picture for you, and what the intent of this discussion was, is focused on next year, yeah, that's why I wanted to give you the 10-year window so you can see what's happening big picture wise, focus on next year, there is a catch project, an initiative, a drive that you all individually or as a group want us to focus on. I know we have discussions all the time in an open format with our citizens here, it would be nice to hear some of those that we can just jot down and then get back to you on a regular basis of our progress towards those initiatives. That was the intent here, so it's really just a discussion. That's all I got.
That was very well explained on the greens.
From a non-golfer, yes.
Yes, that was pretty good. I mean, if I'm looking at this, I'll just comment quickly, the driving range, 2024, not even close. The reason I say that is, until we have greens that are correct, that should be the number one priority for anything that I'm a golfer. So I don't know if that, that should be the number one priority for anything related to golf. As far as, are you looking for suggestions from us?
Just looking for ideas, or if you really have a project that you want to push towards us with the staff, it's not a directive to us, but it gives me the ability to shape something to bring back on.
I mean, I just think one of these days, we have to address several things, we have to address the restaurant, and make a decision really what the hell we're doing there, what we want to stand for, how we want to treat the residents as far as the car playing, do we want to keep it a restaurant, do we want to keep it a hangout for guys who are golfing, what kind of menu do we want? What exactly does Sun 'n' Lake or what we call the islanding restaurant stand for? And we've never really addressed that at a meeting and collectively made a decision. So I think that's very important for us to do. I think then down the road, we have to look at this building. I don't think we utilize this building very well, I don't know if this building is even adequate for what the county might need to do. I mean, I think, you know, ideally, I'd love to get all the car players down here as opposed to get them out of the restaurant, but then we'd have to have a facility there for them here to have some food, drinks, et cetera, et cetera. And that may be talking a few thousand, so, but this place is, needs nothing. The third thing I would like to say eventually is, you know, and I've been on this for a couple of years, is a decent swimming pool for the residents, instead of the kiddie pool that we currently have. Especially with the new homes that are being built, there's a smaller variety of homes being built, and they don't have the room for pools, therefore, those people have nowhere to go. This capacity out here for our floor, it leaves around 60 people, which for a district of 9,000 or wherever we are, is really kind of small. So I'd like to see approval addressed eventually.
One of the things that I would definitely like us to try to pursue, and that is to do our zoning permitting. I do not like the direction that I see and the number of duplexes that are going in, especially those that don't have a garage. I think it's taking down our neighborhoods, and I really want to see that addressed any way possible. To me, the sooner we can get that under our control, and maybe bump up the square footage requirements, but I know what happens with those type of places eventually, it will draw things down, and I think we need to address that quickly.
The county controls that, don't they?
They do, but like, but what we're having going on right now with our county friends, we're able to submit a request to adjust their authorization that creates us, and if they entertain relieving that power, that's solely them. It's a lot easier when we're asking, we have the ability, and they're letting it go. It's a lot easier discussion than them trying to push it on us, or like, no, we don't want it. But I'm with, and I totally understand and agree.
I mean, we did approach them, what, five, six, seven years ago on the square footage?
Yes.
But that was a different time, and maybe it's time to.
That's from again.
I just, you know, we've got so much growth going here, and I've got concern that we'll stymie the growth with the type of places that we're putting in on some of these new divisions that are being built, not new divisions, parts. I mean, when you enter in and the first thing you see is these little duplexes that don't even have a garage, and enforcement's going to be really busy there, because I will not tolerate junk being outside the houses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's just going to be the way it is, but I think we need to put a handle on it.
Okay. The reason the county wouldn't let us change the way we wanted to is because they had, I think we said 8, 9, or more than, they had all these lots, and they didn't think they were going to sell them if we put that on there, so that's what we got to concentrate on is, maybe if they get a whole lot sold, they're being more receptive to it.
Well, they've got to know what's going on all the way over this county.
Yeah.
And I think it's just time for me to say, hey, Sun 'n' Lake is different. Agreed.
Yeah, we can, and I hope that, I agree with Supervisor Herrick, we need to do it, but they're the ones that are going to control it, and that's the problem, is we don't have too much say of ourselves, right now, anyway.
Sure, and just understand, we all need to be very transparent about it, is that while we enjoy the control, that we would like the control of it, the ability to influence it, it is a revenue producer to the county. The building permits, all that stuff. So our discussion with the county needs to be to understand clearly, articulate, yes, you're going to lose some revenue, but it's costing you more revenue in the enforcement, the zoning meetings, the code enforcement, and if you empower us as a district where we can do it, we're willing to take that challenge on, it should be a net gain for them, net loss for them, that they're not losing massive amount of revenue, it's just being redirected to us, and then we're going to be the ones receiving all the calls. Would you do that? We get all the calls on building permits and everything, even though I don't control them, and my thing is I'll forward you to the county. I would like to not be able to do that, and let me forward you to my person that's working it, and we can solve it at a very low level. So I agree with you, we're going to push towards it. With our council, we'll be able to sit with the county and see legally how we can reshape our authorization that creates us and cut that out and give it to us.
And I mean, their tax revenue base to the improvement of the residents will increase costs.
Oh, sure.
So I mean, it's, there's ways of making this net, like you said, net.
Yeah, it's a minimal loss upfront, and they're going to get 2, 3,000 a year in property taxes, if we get done right and built right right now.
Right. So what do you think, they deal through a conversation like that?
I know there's. I know there's, their ministry, their staff, I have not gone to the discussion with their building folks, their staff at the senior level is open to that because it is a major hassle for them. It consumes a lot of energy for them, and they have the rest of the county to worry about. So I think they're open to it, I have no sense of where the commissioners lay on that, we'll have to engage them individually and see their ability to support that. But I think if we go there with a solidified front between us and their staff presented to commissioners, they're a lot easier to engage, saying, both of them want it, it makes sense, you guys just vote on it. I think we can do that.
And the other argument that we had is the amount of problems that we saw in our Eastman, going down Sunland Lake, when we tried to make some repairs to the water break, they're permitting us, permitting cable companies, et cetera, et cetera, to put cables down through there, and we don't know a thing about it. So when we go in there to start to make repairs, it's, oh my God, you know, we've come into a wiring mess of things that we didn't even know existed, so that's just another reason to grab a hold of something we can't.
Anything else, man? I did want to say one other thing. I've been here 14 years, and the last three or four months, I've been to two events that you have cleared on, one was the Veterans Day, and then last night, the Christmas lighting. And Veterans Day, the crowd was, but it was the first year, we got to start someplace. I was very happy last night with the amount of people that showed up at the Christmas lighting tree. I never thought that would happen, but it tells you that if the district puts on a bit, so the residents, it's a good thing, they'll come. And I think I'd like to see more and more of that. You know, my compliments to you, keep it up, but I want to see more. I mean, July, all the holidays, we should have something going on at the district, and I think you'll see a response and bring the district together.
Got it. Appreciate the comments, the staff did great work on that. We will, I am a firm believer of community engagement starts with the leadership and the staff setting the course, and then people will come.
I mean, again, in 14 years, I've never seen the office look that good with the mics.
No.
I mean, it's always been rather dark.
Yeah, we will continue.
And I can tell you that I have heard several people that really enjoyed the state of the district. Instead of the state of the union, the state of the district, your writing of what you put together, you and the staff put out, I think was spot on with what we need. I'd like to see that definitely continued, I've been a proponent of that, and I think it was very good to, this is what we are and where we're at, so.
I thought it was very inspiring.
Thank you, truly was.
Now, you can tell my wife that I inspire people, please.
You tell mine, okay?
All right, there you go.
All right, so, the discussion.
Are we good? Otherwise, any other topics?
What I could add is, and I think we've done a much better job, I feel like a lot of our residents are disconnected from the in-day operations through this place, for many reasons, some of their own reasons, they work all day and whatever. We have nice participation here, I see complaints on social media, we don't have evening sessions, I know we tried that. Events happen, we have emails from most everybody, I just feel like as much as we do, we do a lot, some of us not even notice, they're barely noticed, and I wish we had better community communication somehow. Facebook helps a lot, emails help, whatever it takes, this app we have, I think is going to help, we just need to keep working and getting deeper into the community with communication. Wastewater, I saw Facebook wrote, you're voting on this tomorrow, when did this come about? We all knew that, it was months and months in the works, somehow that didn't get to that person.
That's right. Gotcha, and we'll continue pushing that mechanism.
So where do we go from here? You'll go back to it in a few months or update?
Taking that product, you guys have time to digest it if you want to give me individual feedback on individual things, what I just commented here, we'll package it up. I'm thinking quarterly, we bring it back to you all for any course corrections, and for sure, the ones that the staff is recommending for 2024, I want to lay out a very detailed recommendation plan that you guys either say yay, nay. So in the next three months, that first column will bring you something very more detailed than that, and take a very specific direction from you all as a builder. So that's the next step, probably the March time.
Any public comment from what you've heard, or ideas, what you feel we should be looking at in 2024? Please, you want the microphone?
I just want to support some of the things I heard from the board, particularly around, I guess I call architectural control in terms of, I live very close to Crenada, and I've got that as a concern in terms of the growth of duplexes, for instance, triplexes without what I call architectural control, whether that's putting in garages. I live in communities in Wilmington, Boogah, and whatnot, been here 76 years in the area, and I saw things with, where you had an architectural control committee, where I had to make changes, put eyebrows over the windows, surround a satellite dish, I had an acreage, and though I didn't like it, it certainly helped those developments continue to maintain a high value. So I support that, just wanted to.
Thank you.
The only other thing I'd mention is, one of my renters stayed with me for six months and just bought three properties in the district, and did that because they saw it as a quality development. They're selling off their properties in New York, father and son, they don't have the Coby's, they're going to be buying more in this area, so, thumbs up.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other comment?
No comment.
Next, next item on the action agenda is discussion and motion to accept the assessment appeal committee recommendation.
In your packet, you have the assessment appeal made last Friday, all the participants on our side were there, they reviewed the nine packets, you have the minutes from the meeting, so if you want details on the, you have it in there? You have the minutes in there?
We have nothing.
We have nothing.
Okay.
I make the motion then, until we get the minutes.
We can pause that. Yes, they were all initially denied, so you'll be getting the minutes to read the details of why you were denied it, and then we'll bring this back in January to bring to you all for the final vote to approve your recommendation.
Thank you.
Yep. I can take a second to thank the residents for participating, I know we have one here. It adds value to have the residents participate in that kind of activity.
Yes, we do appreciate your involvement, and it's good to see many of you continue to come with these meetings, and I applaud that. Our next one is discussion and a submission of a speed table request for Mendoza Avenue.
So you should have in your, it's okay, that one. You should have the petition that started the discussion on Mendoza Avenue. We did a speed table analysis in there, you see the feedback from that, a lot of cars on a very small street for the time period we tracked it. Of that, a window of 16% were over the posted speed limit, so it did not meet, we use a 20-25% level where we would recommend a staff, it did not meet that requirement. We do have 20 residents that are asking for it, but for right now, it did not meet the standard recommendation from us to the staff. The concern I would have is that while it may reduce some of the traffic there, they're just going to go one more street over.
Exactly.
And then one more street over.
Isn't that why they wouldn't now?
Exactly.
It's because of the tube.
Yeah.
I think they could come on a speedway that has a tube too.
Cortez.
If they were less obnoxious, I bet more traffic would stay on Cortez.
Yeah, it's driving the discussion that we're having, that I'm having to talk to some traffic management folks, of what's a better way to address it? Is it a more enforceable standardization of our speed limits? Because right now, you have one speed limit on Crenada, you turn off the street, you have a different speed limit, maybe we just keep them all the same? Maybe there's an initiative to put those, not our machine that we stick out here, but the small little box that tells you what you're speeding on like a stop sign or a post sign, and then it just gives you a immediate notification that you're going over the limit. The challenge is, our security force is not empowered to do anything, and that's just another statute issue with the county. Without the creation of a true police force, that's the only way we're going to get that, or hiring a sheriff to be more at our beck and call, and that's going to be a challenge for the size of our district. So we have some unique challenges with the speeding, I would hate that we just go down every street and start putting three, four, five, six speed bumps, because then it's, that defeats. So we're recommending no speed bump for your stuff.
But again, someone established the criteria of like 25%, and they didn't need it, so I would agree with him, they all they're going to do is move over one street, so. Onto the next, well, I guess, any public comment regarding that initiative? Okay, item D is discussion and motion to approve the new legal contract for the district.
So we are, Garrett is here from the firm, Boss Law Firm, that we selected as the council for the district. They had a flat, they were the flat fee model that we presented based on not only our current budget, but the anticipated legal actions that we are going to be facing next year. Nothing against the district, it's just the amount of legal business we deal with, claims, foreclosures, the lawsuit with the water folks, the wastewater plant. It made the entire sense after having discussed it with all the submissions, as well as with Boss, that they brought the breadth of knowledge, the expertise, and the ability that we have a controlled cost towards that, to be able as a district. Right now as a district, I have six lawyers, that's five too many. They're doing a variety of things, for whatever reason, having a firm that has that expertise to put that all under one umbrella moving forward will definitely be a cost saving for the district, and it gives us the one folk to go towards to fix it. So selected their firm, they're working with us now, they'll continue to work with us, we're in contract negotiations, so what we need here is a motion for you to let me do the contract negotiation with them for the final resolve, to vote on their contract in January. They're on board now contractually with us, paying for their services right now, but we don't have a contract for you to look at right now, because we just brought them on board last Wednesday.
It's 12,500 a month.
Yes, sir, yeah, flat fee, 12,500 a month, it covers everything from litigation to sending out letters, claims, foreclosures, puts everything under one umbrella.
And foreclosures alone was wanting to go astrid.
Well, we budgeted 175 just for next year, combining all those legal coverages, so just going with this flat fee is less than what we budgeted, and it gets everything done that we needed to do, so.
And what are you negotiating?
The final contract. We have a contract that's in the bid, we're needing to work out some of the specifics, example, their ability to be onsite, do I need them for regular hours, weekly, that's what we're discussing now. They'll be at the meetings, that's not an issue, but they've been very responsive, that a lot of our work is done, email, phone call, that satisfactory does, I don't need them to drive an hour and a half to come here for a five-minute meeting. So that's the negotiation we're doing now, not the cost, the cost, we're going to be 12,500 a month, I'm not bickering about that, it's the details of the meeting schedule and their participation with us as a staff.
With that 12,500 change, the negotiations don't go well.
I can comment on that, primarily just to give you guys a little more background, I know at the last meeting, we spoke a bit about the firm, but our firm is dynamic, we're all across the state, our principal office is located in Winter Park, but we have clients as far south as Indian Town with County Attorney, Chippewa County, so a lot of our participation day-to-day in what this roster would need from me or any other attorney at the firm, generally be accomplished by zooming into a meeting, conferencing it on a phone call. The nature of having a flat fee arrangement generally means that legal participation is ongoing with department heads, so generally, there's not a lot of big issues that pop up that would require us to be onsite, so I think if some of the office hours requirements change, I think we might be able to lower the price a little bit, talk to Becky Boss about that, that's certainly something we can consider. But yeah, that's, if you guys have any other questions about our firm, or you know, how we practice, what we're going to offer the district, we have to answer that as well.
It's just a motion that authorized me to complete the contract negotiation for your approval in January.
You have a motion?
I'll do that, I'll second it.
We've already had a discussion. Any public comment? Call vote?
Supervisor Billman?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Herrick?
Yes. Welcome aboard, thank you.
Very much looking forward to working with you all.
Just, so, the Avante case.
Yeah.
We're in court now, well, I will make them fully aware, they'll get to Mr. Rhodes and
get briefed on that, we're not changing lawyers in stride of the court case. The Avante case ends right now in March of next year, and that's when it should be resolved in court, but I want to get Garrett spun up on that, so he gives me any feedback legally that I can have discussions with Mr. Rhodes appropriate, and so, but we're not going to change that lawyer. All the other lawyers, we are changing, I mean.
I just, it seemed like that would be the right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, with that, we got any add-on items?
Nothing, sir.
Petitions into communications?
Other than the petition for the speed bump, that's the only thing we received.
Okay, staff reports, first, law, Black House?
Good morning, supervisors. Real quick, go around, I have been talking to Mr. Bossard about a couple of options that we've discussed, and other greens have been a sore subject for a month now or two, we're doing everything we can to try to keep them bented and keep bear on them as far as that goes. Little bit of history that I've been digging in, you know, everybody always talks about the greens, how, you know, they're good, they're bad, they're good, they're bad, we had a couple of months ago, we were in really good shape, they sour. The biggest thing that I'm finding, the more I dig in these greens, is what's underneath them totally. So I kind of asked a couple of people around, I was on a green yesterday and actually spoke with a charter member here, and so basically, looking at the topography, these greens were constructed with just about every pond around here, when you look at every green on Deer Run, that was basically what a push-up green is. So technically, we could look at our greens and say that, you know, I've talked about the drilling field process, that's about taking and going 12 inches down with the one-inch core and putting sand in it, again, it's a seven-by-seven spacing, talking about that, it's about a $40,000 investment, which, you know, Mike and I are on our way to try to save as much money as we can out of our budget and get this process done, and lieu of anything else currently. But in order for us to really have sufficient greens in the future, I mean, you know, we can set and point fingers at whoever we want, but the greens are not constructed properly, and I'll be more than happy to take anybody out there. We did an HSTRIC test a year ago, which was basically 14-inch core on them, we gave a report, a lot of people didn't want to hear about it, and I'm not going to point fingers, I'm just going to say our greens are not constructed properly. And really, we have to change that soil structure in order to get these greens. We can take our greens, I can, you know, put in our budget every year to drill and fill them, it'll probably take us three years to get our soil exchanged the way it should be. I know Greens Mix was brought in for turtle greens, those greens over there are a little bit stronger, it is definitely a different grass variety, it's many verde, it's champion, you know, it's a no-till, but I've dug as far as a handle on a shovel, deep three But I've dug as far as a handle on a shovel, deep three foot in those greens. And they're really, the finds in the greens are what seals them off in the wintertime. And it can happen quickly. I mean, we've been them every two weeks, every other week. I've spiked yesterday morning, we put air to gas, we're air to gas internal this morning, we top dressed them. You know, there's, we do everything to every green consistently. All 42 greens, we do the same process. And each green has its own characteristic. So I'm doing everything I can to try to get those moving forward. We're going to keep venting them, we're raising heights up a little bit more on them just till we get them full. Again, like I said, I'm not going to point any fingers, I'm going to try to get some alternatives. If we get none, then we're going to open up big holes in them this May when I do it and try to get as much sand down in those greens as we can. And that's the only thing that's going to resolve these issues going forward, is to try to exchange that soil in those greens.
You're talking deer roam, right? Turtle spawn?
Yes, sir. So turtle, turtle, I mean, I'm going to keep doing what we're doing on that. Turtle drain is probably in the four inch per hour where deer, deer's biggest thing is the pathogens and stuff that's in the soils. So these pathogens lay dormant until it gets optimal, whether it's humidity or whether it's heat. And I know it falls on, I don't want to confuse anybody with what I'm saying, but that disease lays in those greens. And then at a often time, it pops up and rears its head. I mean, they checked out quick. I'm not going to say they didn't. And it seems to be the first four that are worst troubled greens.
What's, why is that? I mean, that's what I...
It's a pathogen.
It would seem that all the greens are the same, with the exception of 15 that was done a few years back or something.
Yes, sir.
But why didn't we, why haven't we seen it on five, six, seven, eight, nine?
I'm going to say that primarily it's what it's composed of. I mean, supposedly there was a pond that left the number one green on deer that that green was constructed of. So I don't know what was in that soil prior. I mean, we've done our test analysis, I know there's a lot of finds, there's a lot of organic matter in it. I know that the majority of the greens that have ponds around them, that is the soil that those greens were constructed of. And that's, that's a typical push-up green. So you have... Yes, sir.
Yes, or what?
It's bad. It's bad. So when you build a green, you got a greens mix that's more coarse. The biggest thing is to have where water runs, can move through your green and where the air can exchange. So even USGA greens, guys that keeps solid tiny greens all the time, they push a layer down which becomes an iron layer. So if you take, when you go to rebuild your greens, you'll see three or four inches of iron in the bottom of them, and that makes like a shell on the bottom of that as well. So technically, when you guys redid your greens, I think in 2011, they should have been welded out eight to 10 inches. I'm not saying that whoever did them or anything was wrong, but I wouldn't come to you and ask you to resurface the green without changing, welding the greens out and going at least six or eight inches of greens mix on them. And again, when you build greens, I built four golf courses, and every green that I've ever built, I put drainage in, a hearing bone drainage, and gravel in the bottom of them, so you never get the greens sealed off. Anybody that's been around golf and seen golf construction, or if you go into the USGA website and look at a greens, proper greens construction, they all have gravel layers and they all have choker layers. We don't have that here. It's super fine. You can take a cuff cutter and get down there seven inches right now, and anyway, get past that seven inches, it's like concrete underneath. So I mean, it's just, they don't breathe, they don't exchange right with the air and the water. So I mean, I'm going to try, I'm going to keep aerifying as much as we can. Every time we aerify, we disturb about 6% of that green. That's about all you get out of a 5'8" core. So we just got to go bigger and put more soil in, better sand in, better root zone mix in them. And, you know, we're going to do everything we can to recover them right now. We've probably spent $10,000, $11,000 on fungicides in the last month just trying to combat what's laying there. You know, the only way to get it down there is use super penetrants and try to get it down there where the pathogens are. And then keep venting like, I mean, you guys have been playing and I'm sure you see how I've been venting them almost every other week. I mean, it's just all we can do is keep air to them right now. But, you know, we've sent lab reports out and it's the same stuff. It's a pathogen, it's take all, it's root decline. It's, it's the same stuff that we dealt with a year ago, but it's not as bad. We do have some better tools at our disposal with our air to gas, and we're going to continue doing that. I mean, we got to do it every week, we'll do it every week. We're just going to continue, we monitor our moisture constantly on these greens.
If we were to take the first four greens, you're talking about doing the drilling and filling the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's going to be an initial cost to that. But that's not going to correct it, right?
It will correct it over time.
Okay, how much time?
Probably three, probably three drilling fills.
Okay, so we're talking three, three season?
Yes, sir.
The other is to take them down and do the gravel and such?
Or at least like six or eight inches of root zone mix and fill them properly.
Okay, to do this, you're not going to be able to answer this right now. If you do the three years, it's going to be extra cost to build these four greens. Go ahead and rebuild them the way they're supposed to be done, keep them in mind, and I don't mean that. Sarcastic. If you do it that way, there's going to be a cost. I'd like to see the two costs.
Yeah, I already know what the drilling field cost is, I've already looked at it. Like I said, Mike and I are going to try to do it regardless. It's 42, I don't need to answer that.
Yes, sir. Put that together, I'd like to see the cost of doing...
Yes, sir.
The somewhat fixed for four years, three years person going ahead and redoing it.
Well, again, like I said, you know, we got a great layout out there and, you know, we're going in the right direction. We've got a lot of positives going on out there, but the greens, from what I understand from the person I spoke with yesterday, they've been a struggle since they've been built. And they've been here forever. And like I said, I'm not making any excuses, but they got to be...
Not asking for it, but just different numbers.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No, I promised myself I wasn't going to do this, but I got $10 million of gold. It would probably be a different course. We gave you guys everything you asked for. We gave you a $2 million irrigation, we gave you $300,000 for the greens on turtle, $300,000 for the greens on deer, anything you guys have asked for, we gave you. We had a problem last spring where the greens went down, and then we got a health storm. So we called in the agronomist from your company, and he told us how to fix it, or he told you guys how to fix it. And here we are again, having a conversation about the greens. You know the expression, kiss me once? Have you heard that one?
Sure, I have. So...
That's all I, I mean, come on. I'll tell you what, if you can fix them this time, fine. If you can't, then I am going to go to the district, go to the other board supervisors and ask them to make a change.
That's...
That would be kissing me twice, this is three times. I mean, come on.
Well, again, right, it doesn't really matter. You can, you could get the best superintendent in this country, and you give him these conditions right now, you're going to struggle on these greens.
What I'm telling you is, those conditions are not acceptable. Tell us what it is to fix it and then fix it. We should not have these conversations every year. It's just stupid. The membership is not happy right now.
And nor am I.
Right. So it's either it's going to get fixed, or we're going to move on?
That's fine.
Jimmy, I just wondered, because I had a question from somebody that was at the meeting, but a couple of meetings ago, it was, this was caused by a water problem, we were told? Is that in my...
It started, Mr. Gilpin, it started thinning them, and then of course, when it gets the exposure, then it rears its head. I mean, we all have sickness in our bodies all the time. When you get to a certain point and get weak is when it's going to be more prevalent.
Okay, okay, well, I just was asked that because they said, we're confused, they were saying the greens are bad now, but we were told it was happened because of water. And now we have green replacements.
Well, we actually have four greens, one through four, that we struggle with right now.
Okay.
And, you know, I was on them this morning and digging them, and they're viable tissue in them, they're kind of...
You've got, you've got seven greens, green, that are damaged. You may have four that are real dead. But you've got other ones that are just, that are damaged as well. So it's not a restricted problem for the first four or five, like any understanding of it. It really, they all got green replacements.
There's...
You know, now, now, unlike a story that we never heard before, it's the soil.
You did hear the...
This is the new...
The first year I did...
You never came to this boy, or nobody ever came to this boy and said anything about soil problem.
That's not true. I had the ESTRIC test and you were president and you said you did not want to hear about it.
Yeah, we got to hear you. All right.
Russ, Paul, Tom?
Yes. As, I'm Neil O'Tell, I live on the Navy Drive, 4934, the Navy Drive. I'm a resident of the church over eight years before that, and still periodically I have been with Double Beach Company. So I have some experience with greens. But I started with them in 91. Double Beach has been struggling with push-up greens for 70 years. One of the best courses in the world. And we hired the number one agronomist from Penn State in 91. And we began at that point rebuilding greens. Double Beach had a much bigger budget and so on and like. But we learned quickly from the agronomist that push-up greens are a problem. And that year, we replaced three greens in 91, prior to the 92 USO, with USGA spec greens. Since then, the company has periodically replaced every green on Double Beach with USGA specs. Now, I sat on board two years ago, and I heard Jimmy talk to us about the soil. And I hear today that Jimmy is still trying to find budget conscious ways to address the greens, knowing that we really need to address the drainage of them. Building the greens from the subsurface up, not doing them fixed, but he's trying to save you money. I hear President Herrick recognizing that there's a bigger problem and we need to address it. And I would encourage you to continue down that path. Because what we need to look at is the cost and maybe figuring out how to address first green and periodically start replacing every green with a USGA spec green built from subsurface up rather than continuing to put band-aids on the soil problem that we have. Thank you for your coming here.
Okay, Mike? Yeah, Mike? Good morning supervisors. I'm just going to kind of go through this report here, just know a couple of changes. I just want to let you know that, you know, when I drew up these numbers, I didn't have final numbers, so these are some forecasted numbers in here, and I just wanted to update you on some of the changes, because I've just now, in the last few days, got some actuals. All the revenue numbers are pretty solid, they're probably within a half a percent or 1% of where they are, so they're super, super accurate. A couple that I want to just bring to your attention. The maintenance labor, I overestimated on there, was actually probably about $7,000 less than that. That's pretty much it for that one, that's way off. Everything else is probably within $500 or so. On the F and B side, I underestimated the labor a little bit, and everything else is within a few percentage points. I did want to note, let's see, last Saturday on the 16th, we had the Big Brothers, Big Sisters from it, as you know, the weather on Saturday was quite horrendous. They did find a decent window in the morning where it wasn't too bad, and they actually did play. So on a day where we probably would have seen $0 in revenue, because there was zero other rounds played that day, we did, we did $1,600 in revenue, which was about $4,400 involved and $2,400 in the restaurant, just directly tied to that tournament. So that tournament brought in about $6,800 in revenue. As far as upcoming events for golf, there was two that weren't on the initial upcoming events this morning. So one of which is the Citrus Golf Trail Invitational, which was in, which you announced in the last meeting, which is, it's next week, so that's the 27th through the 30th is their tournament days. So I'm super excited for that event.
That's the women's event?
That's the women's event, yep. The other event, which is, it's a golf event, but it doesn't take up the golf courses, the South Florida State College shootout that we do every year, their million dollar shootout. So they just, they have a rain, they have a little four bays on the rains, they hit it for three or four days to qualify. And then one, that's Saturday morning, they'll be, they'll have their top 10 or whatever, they'll go to 18 at 8 o'clock in the morning, and they'll all get one shot to win a million dollars. So pretty cool event, brings them, you know, it doesn't bring in a crazy amount of revenue for the club, and we don't have to give them a whole lot either, so it's cool that they run. And also brings a lot of, you know, people to the club too. Everything else, we talked about there. All right, on the expense side of the restaurant, I overestimated the cost of goods sold by about $7,000, so that was about, it's 7K better than what I estimated. And restaurant labor was off by about 5K, so they kind of washed out. So overall, it's pretty close. And I just want to say overall, you know, you'll be getting these financials here soon, but overall, year to date, on the golf, the golf club financials, we're about 20K ahead of plan. So off to a good start in the first two months. Definitely got some things that I'm monitoring, expenses for sure. We're doing pretty good labor wise in all of our departments, except for, we're about 5K over for the first two months in restaurant labor. And there's a little bit of reason for it, and, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're keeping our, your service levels up, and then we're, you know, we'll start trimming that back a little bit. It was, it was solid in October, it was a little high in November, so that's, we're definitely monitoring that, and we'll work to get that back in mind as we go through the year. With that said, that's, that's all I got for you guys in this year, if you have some questions.
I'm sorry, I may have missed it. Did you give an update on the membership, where we are in the membership?
So membership's a little bit behind last year.
I'm more interested in the numbers than the dollars, because the dollars should be 5% higher. So how are the numbers?
Actual memberships, I'll have to, that's not, I don't put that number in here, I can, but I won't give that to you.
Yeah, if we want to build that going forward, at least for the first, what, three or four months, and we get a pretty good gauge where we are?
Yeah, do you want it by category? I mean, you kind of need it by category, because I don't really want...
Mike, you're going to ask...
It'll make a little more sense by category as, than a big lump number.
I do have one question on the restaurant. What is our requirement for sending somebody? If we hire somebody, how do we train them before we send them out on the floor?
So we have a whole training program that we go through, we have a whole training packet that we go through. So we take some of our higher performing servers, and they are set aside as trainers. So they will actually go through three days with that person, and then we'll start to try them out on the floor.
So should the server know the menu and stuff like that?
Well, obviously, yeah. So if we have a, if we have a new server that doesn't know the menu very well, then it's kind of twofold, either we need to, we need to spend some more time with that, and they need to spend more time with that. So if that is the situation that you would like to...
I would ask you to decide on that, I'd be happy to. Obviously, I would ask you to envision to what I'll stick?
Some weak point. Your advertising of the menu is still somewhat weak, in my opinion. Just, the level of service for the most part is better than it's been, but we still have problems, especially just knowing simple things like what's a soup if it's...
Yeah, I had dinner with like seven people, and the waiter was very nice to him. Sweet guy, tried his hardest. First thing he said to me was, I don't know the menus, my first night here. Okay. But he was a nice guy, he did a great job for us. How about we had a walk-in show? Right, well, I don't know what you're talking about now, so...
He didn't know anything about it.
He knew nothing about some pizza, and that was a special from Monday night.
Yeah. And why would it, new one be put on a big table? Because it was a big table, I saw. I will give you accolades, or chef, great, and staff for the Christmas dinner that was associated with the couple's Christmas dinner. Totally, totally different than what we had in our hotel. Everything was very, very satisfactory. A lot of cool moves to become everybody, so let's keep that going.
Yeah, very... Yeah, very, I'm very happy where we are staff-wise. I mean, it's, obviously that's been a huge struggle for a few years now, but I'm very happy with the team that we have right now. Obviously, there's always tracking and extra things, better than we can do, but, I mean, we're fully staffed. We have some good quality folks in the back of the house, good quality folks in the front of the house. It's always gonna be a, you know, there's always gonna be turnover, but I will definitely address your concerns.
I'll give you wrong services better than that. We're done, a lot of people, I've experienced myself, but there's still room for.
Yeah, absolutely, and there always will be, we're gonna keep on it, for sure. But thank you, Mr. Herrick.
General counsel report.
Yes. Not a whole lot to report. I just, I will say, you know, goal for the next month is to come up to speed on all our existing litigation. Had a meeting with Mr. Bossard on Friday, he kind of laid out his goals for the next year. So working hard to get a jumpstart on that. And then just an item for your consideration. There's a new law in Florida that requires board members of special districts to complete, just like your county and municipal counterparts, a four-hour course on sunshine law, public records law, and ethics. That is a new requirement in 2024. Thankfully, our firm gives those presentations for all our clients every year. So if that's something you guys would like us to do to fulfill your requirement, I can get with the manager and we can work out a date for a workshop. There are other ways to satisfy the requirement, there are all sorts of, you know, events you can go to and, you know, stay overnight and get your requirement fulfilled, but.
No way.
No way.
Yeah, we do all those for all our clients that would like this, too. So that's something you guys are interested in, but you absolutely.
Well, I'm not interested in it, but I guess you see how it's required. Well, I will.
We were gonna shoot for the February, once we see the new leadership as well as a new person replaces for you. Then we'll figure it a time in.
Yeah, here.
February, you all get together, rather than individually, and we'll work on the February schedule.
All right. Okay, thank you. General manager.
You have your report pretty cut and dry, not a lot on the HR front, working through any of your evaluations, and some housekeeping there. Operationally, one note on the golf and clubhouse. I'm hoping by next month, the goal in our discussions with Mike and the team, as well as Trum, we're gonna synchronize the accounting side of it where they're presenting the same month as we're presenting. Right now, it's 30 days behind. We're trying to get the kicks caught up, we gotta change some timings of some reports. But I'm hoping by January, the numbers you see are a holistic view of the entirety of the district finances, and they're all for good money. So you'll see January, December's numbers for everything. Not dipping back 60 days for golf and restaurants. So that's the goal, we've been working that with the accountants, trying to get that timing on that. We will continue to work format with our infomart friends to try to get to your specific requests, Mr. Brooks. And I agree, it needs to be done. It should be simple, but there are some challenges there that they're running into. Financially, we're in good stead. We've received about 37% of assessment revenue has come in so far, and we just put those out 30 days ago, so we're good there. That'll continue to flow in. We're getting the final mechanics of how we're going to start accepting the special assessment in January. We've actually had to pay, so we're counting for that. And we will, we will, you know, apply that accordingly. The mechanics, again, more so for our public, the intent to show an option on water utility bills is the only way we as a district have the ability to give basically a financing plan of the $15 a month. If we wait to just throw it all on your assessment bill, which it will be for some folks that don't have utility bills, then that's, that avoids the ability for a person to budget it on a monthly basis. But you will see that flowing out starting in January. And how you pay it, there'll be a variety of ways to pay it. You'll get a live accounting of what you paid, and we will provide that back to you. And then you'll get a live status of what you still owe. We are still working out the mechanics, I'm waiting to speak to Garrett on it specifically of how we're tying into the sale of a house, the closing, the rollover of that assessment. We're gonna work those mechanics out, so we're clean about it. So more to follow on that. But it's gonna continue, we're flowing that out and you should see some products in your January bills, for the most part, I think, that'll be a timeline. I got it. Fully understand the importance of our greens and what you're requesting. Trust me, that's elevated at my level, and it's not to feed the needs of our golfing community. If we have two lackluster courses and they become goat farms, all our values drop. So we need to understand that as a collective. Not that that's a priority, but that needs to be understood as a collective. That drives the value of our district, as well as other things, amenities, roads, and so on. So we will provide you a holistic plan of how we take this on as an infrastructure project, which it is. It is not just a golf project. And I will present you the data required as, or is it a Band-Aid? Is it a full meal deal plan? And we'll lay that out sooner rather than later, because there is a criticality to that of timing. And also the operations of the restaurant and so on, digging into that as we go. No issues on utility wastewater. We have some cosmetic stuff, we're finishing up around Sunland Boulevard, some sod, some concrete work. I've made the decision that I'm gonna push that into the January timeframe. I did not feel comfortable paying contractors three times the rate just to knock out a cement project during the holidays. It made no sense whatsoever. So that's why that ain't done. It will be done as soon as we get back after the holiday season in January. So some of the cement work, some of the sidewalk work, the irrigation's been fixed, the pipe's in, it's working, it's been tested. Most of the sod is in, there's some sod that we still need to add once we get the sidewalks done. But that should all be totally done and zeroed out by the first couple of weeks of January, and we'll pay the right price, and it won't be gouged on. So that was my decision, just so we're all clear on that. But that's the biggest project, we're working on two potential projects in the near future that are continuing to remove all the asbestos coated lines on Sunland Boulevard, as well as Florida Avenue. That's our next two ones on the high list to address for project-wise. Wastewater had a good meeting with our contractor, Florida Waters. We've answered 48 of the 56 questions. So that's been responded back to DEP, Department of Environmental Protection. We have about six more questions or so that we gotta get an answer from, some financials, some other stuff. Having a site visit for that contractor, they're coming down here in the next two weeks to walk the ground, so we can answer specifically some of their concerns. We will be getting a geo tech, testing done of the sites that starts in January. That's part of the process, to get a good analysis of the soils and the area in total. So that'll start working and we will start potentially some land rubbing and so on in the near future. Not January, but in the near future. And then the parcels and so on, the acquisition of some of the ones that are towards the back that we need to acquire. Still in discussion with county on Schumacher. Right now, we're at a point that the discussion is positive. And the county is now at a point that if we give them access to the north side of Schumacher, all the parcels we own, where they can put some retention ponds for the construction. So I'm saying retention ponds, basically that lot that's hovering, hanging on the side of the road. They're able to do a dip and put a retention runoff from stormwater. If we're able to provide that, them access to that, we're not gonna give them the land, we can provide them access to it, it ties into our wastewater plan, it's designed that way. That is probably the sticking point, that if we are able to do that, then the county will take on the project of completion all the way to the end at their, their costs. And our contribution will be not only some of the retention ponds, but right now, we're still in discussions of assessing the businesses along there that will be impacted by road. And that'll be a discussion that we'll continue to have, bring back the offer, final quote on that. So 20 parcels, half business, half residential parcels that are on Schumacher Road that will get direct benefit of a new road in front of them. The discussion will be, do we assess them as a district, or does the county assess them? And then they assess both sides of the road. That's the discussion I'm having right now with county. More to follow on that, and we'll bring that to you probably in the January timeframe. As for a time completion, we're using a no later than two years out. They need to have that road done, because that matches our timeline for Palermo being done to connect. So we have a hard road attached to a hard road, and not a shell road. So they're working on a 24-month window, starting in January, that the timing should roll out and then they're gonna start putting money towards that to get that done. That's where we stand on Schumacher. I will definitely either bring the.
More positive than the end.
Yeah, I'll definitely either bring a commissioner, I prefer to bring the roads engineer rather than commissioner next month, to bring them to give you guys a more in-depth discussion of the concept moving forward for the road. The commissioners, they can say what they want individually, but I think hearing from their staff of their plan would be more risk-reasonable, appreciated by you all, as well as our citizens, when it comes to Schumacher. You know, other than that, any specific issues, concerns? We're going to, well, tied to the GM's report, we talked the over 25 expenditures, you all see those. Nothing out of the norm, you all either approved them.
What is the bottom?
Yeah, that is a, the add sync, that's a question that's walked out on me now, my finance person.
I mean, you guys even have a question mark.
We do, I have a question mark, because I'm trying to get the specifics. I'll get Coral if I can just hold off financial G's gets back in, and we'll get you an answer on that.
I do have some questions. The more information you give a guy like me, the more questions I have.
Well, sure, I don't mind that.
I'm not so sure this is good. I'm just, I'm curious, couple of things. The month, the overtime was like $10,700 for the month, according to your report. Is that average, is that good, is that bad?
It was a connection about, we had two security officers that were on, one was medical, one was injured. So there was some overlap there, but it was mainly towards our water department, working late nights with KDL on that project. So, yeah, that's not the norm.
What was the norm, baby? I mean, there's always the could be overtime.
Yeah, we have a dip in overtime sometimes with our recreation folks with the pool, but that's very minimal. Mostly, it's either our utilities that responding to after-hours calls. So the average arrow, average for overtime.
I'm pulling that up right now.
Yeah, she'll watch you. And we monitor monthly, it's probably not, it's a little bit higher here because of code enforcement being pushed out there more time, overlapping time, as well as security more so.
Like I said, I didn't see it, whatever.
No, I got you.
And in addition to that, you have to remember, too, anytime there's a district holiday that would fall anywhere in that pay period, any employee who is on call on shift is getting paid overtime for all hours. So for instance, our security force, when they worked on a district holiday, anyone who works on that district holiday is getting paid time and half, not just straight time.
I was just curious, because I saw it, I didn't.
Sure, and I can, I will get you a number to kind of give you what a stay there might look like.
Then I got a couple of other questions, right? The top on page, I'm not sure, on the notes, it says new Thompson pumps, scheduled soon. Are those the Thompson pumps?
Those are the county ones that they bought, yeah. The county bought them, whether they're just being delivered, it's just a long span for delivery.
This has been over here, right?
Yeah, county bought them for us, we got them on order, so they're coming.
And then it says new building, five weeks until delivery, I don't know what that means.
That was the metal building in unit four.
Unit four.
It says five weeks is what they gave us for the completion of construction, it's not the delivery. They're, we're removing it now, yeah, the language is. We're tearing down the space, prepping it, and then the construction begins.
Okay, then.
Add sync, yeah, here's your add sync answer.
Yes.
Add it's.
It's $60,000 or something?
$80,000.
$80,000.
It actually is repeated the first invoice on that line for KDL. You'll see that it's $80,405. That is just a line showing the payment, showing the check that went out. It's probably a screen grab. No, it's not listed twice, it's probably an inquiry and a screen grab to show that that check was cut and what the check number was. That's all, it's just a screen grab. It just says, see what it says on the payments? That's all, it's just repeated.
So, yeah, and that may be on the production of the slide, the true 25 and over is the 269 number. That's what we have, 25 over. That is just showing the accountants, infomart has shown that we paid that $80,000 out. So that's just how it's presented here, our apology.
Ever since you.
Our accounts pay with software.
There you go, yes, sir. We're continuing discussions on our 50th anniversary. We met with our citizens committee, we met with our staff, we laid out some initial guidance to them. We have some members of our residents that are working with the county, Highlands County paper, the Sun Times, to feed them some information, historical data concerning the 50-year history, some photos, so that's happening. We're laying out the timeline of events that we should have presented by January. What you will see in the next few weeks that will be tied to our 50th is on New Year's Eve night, there's an event going on at our clubhouse. And when they do, the ball drop or balloon drop or whatever we're doing at night, there'll be a presentation, a very quick discussion of, we are now officially starting our 50th year. We'll cut a cake, we'll do whatever, and we'll have a champagne toast. And that's the first official event for the 50th. Just really just insert it into an existing event that's ongoing for the New Year's Eve. Yeah, I mean, New Year's Eve, New Year's Eve, yeah. So that'll start the year off. It's just gonna be towards the end, Mike's working it, how we're gonna sync it in, and what we're going to provide. Right now, we're thinking of a big sun on my cake that gets carved up, part of the ceremony for that night. That starts the year off. And then you'll start seeing, as the year flows out, meal specials, drink specials, events, community events, music in the park, all that type of stuff. What the team's working on right now is, right now, we have an internal budget across the departments for community engagement. More than likely, once we lay out the details to include the major event in April, the weekend event with a dinner dance, a golf tournament that we will be hosting, we will be hosting. Once we lay all that out, I'm almost positive there will be a slight budget tick-up that we will have to bring to you all for a budget amendment to recommend, to get your guidance of how much you want to put towards this. Because by then, I'll have how much we're going to be getting donations from some of the businesses and whatnot that'll sponsor some of these events. And that's what we're waiting on some of that feedback, but not looking at it being a lot. But we definitely, we're gonna go above the budget that we have for the regular events.
Go for it.
Yeah, so we're doing that. These are some of the things we're talking about. You'll start seeing some stuff in the pro shop for polos and 50th anniversary polos that you can buy that you were here then type thing, and you participated and so on. Special edition in a magazine, in the local magazine will be done. We're doing the time capsule, that'll be on the 16th of April, the actual day of our 50th year. We'll do that probably out by the district offices somewhere. And we'll have an event that brings all, you know, drop in the paper for the day, whatever, we'll figure out all that stuff. The chef and Mike's working the, what we're doing for the weekly specials for meals. And it's basically one week out of the month is our initial concept. One week out of the month, it'll be advertised, there'll be a meal and a drink, gin and tonic, whatever. And we're going back to the 1974. So what was hot in 1974? Someone refer to you old guys of what was going on that. What was hot in 1974? I'm going to pick your brains so we can show and forecast that out. Sorry, I pointed for that, not you guys. And that's kind of the concept that we're going with. What was the flavor of the day back then? And then we'll present that as a meal and a drink.
Ripple on the rocks.
Ripple on the rocks, okay. Is it in the brown bag or not? So more to follow, we'll lay it out for you in January. And really want to amp up to Mr. Brooks's point, if we have a recurring event, you know, our dinner dances that we have, our Fourth of July, our Halloween stuff, we will have a slice of the 50th tied to that. So we'll have it. So we'll have it continuously for the year. We will celebrate for the year. We will take full advantage of the year and do it from there. But more to follow on the specifics there. On our landowner meeting, we're moving forward. Right now, we have received no candidacies. Okay? Six more days until that closes out?
Sure, that will be one.
Okay, so if we close out, Melissa will put out something next week that will have the actual ballot. And we'll start publicizing that. And then we'll move towards the actual election in January after the board meeting. So we'll move out that way. Again, as of today, no citizen has come to me asking to do the bottom.
Where are we in the county? Did they ever tell us anything? Did they ever, there was also a thing about the code enforcement?
Yeah, so it's not on the county's this month's agenda again. And once I saw that agenda, I reached back out to County Commissioner. She punted me towards the legal counsel. And I'll be having discussion, probably going to bring in Garrett. We're going to have a discussion with them, find out what's the reasoning we can't get it on the county agenda for a vote. I can't give you an answer until I have a discussion with the legal counsel of the county. But she's controlling.
That was code enforcement.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's, I'm just wondering if it's something that we need to course correct, but we haven't been told. So, again, it's not in December's packet for the county. So we'll continue if we want to.
I mean, you certainly got to press them to find out exactly what's going on.
Sure, I agree.
Because it's been a couple of years.
Yeah, the landowners, I mean.
Well, it's been three months. And they should have it.
It's been a month for you, but it's been two years for us.
We wrote it for them based on their requirements, so it's pretty cut and dry. But I'll get an answer from legal counsel, from their legal counsel. And you have in your packet the golf minutes from the last meeting. I was not, we had a separate meeting. We called back the new committee, golf committee chair. We had a meeting, Nima and Mike, a meeting with them, laid out the details, the specifics that you gave me directed on. Their last meeting was more an informal interview, we're leaving blah, blah, blah. It wasn't a lot of business done. Their January meeting will be more focused on business. He has the direction, the request that we've had of concerns of public speaking, concerns of involvement in the restaurant, just like feedback. He will bring that as the new president to the, and I'm sorry, it's Dane, Mike.
Johnson.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize. He'll bring that in January's meeting of the golf committee. I will be at January's meeting of the golf committee. And then we'll see how that lays out. I made it very clear that if it's not to a satisfactory level of the board, there could be a dissolution of this committee and I'll just leave it at that. But that's up to you guys. So he's aware of that. He wanted to talk to you all individually. I think he will reach out to get a sense of where your specific concerns are. But he's going to bring it out to the golf folks in January. And then finally, I want to, yeah, we're doing a lot on code enforcement. I think you all are seeing it. We have two very informed and professionals that are hitting it all the time, whenever we have an issue, as well as being proactive. We're getting a lot of good feedback from our citizens of thank you. Finally, we're doing this right and wrong, and we're course correcting as we go, putting a lot of resources on it, a lot of eyes on it. We have a new tool we've had now for three months, GoGov. And what I wanted to do is have Bob and Roger quickly show you the product so you see the level of detail that we are placing towards this. So if a citizen has a concern, that hit you up. We're able to say, the district has this in hand, we have the product, we're enforcing the rules. We're going to magistrate court now two months in a row. We're holding people accountable. That hasn't done in a long time. These people are being held accountable, being charged fines, and they're paying their fines. So that's good. But for the most part, 90%, these guys will tell you the details, we're getting immediate compliance once we identify, bring it to their attention. They get that notice in the mail, courtesy notice, costs us a stamp. They're complying very quickly, and we're resolving the issue. And now they're on our list that if it's continuous, they are now moved to a more focused list of, okay, you complied once, what's wrong now? And these guys are all over it. So very quickly, I'll turn it to you two. You can show the supervisors this product. It'll be on your screen right here. It's the GoGov code enforcement product.
Will that stand there? At least that might. Try to keep this brief, at least hour and a half. Yeah, what you're seeing now right now are cases coming up that are already written and already ready to be adjudicated before our magistrate in January. But I'll get back. Can I? There, I'm good. When we begin a case. Is that? Okay, let me do it. Okay, bring up that word to the side for me.
Okay.
I'm looking for where that, click on that, that lower table. Thank you. It should be down the actual office. Yeah, but if I bring up, go to that top. Yo, just below. There's the officers. And that's, when you begin a case, you go down to choose your own name, go down to you. Okay? There we go. And now the program would recognize me as the operator. We're, all code officers are issued tablets. We have tablets you can actually carry with us. We have carrier, like truck, protect them so that they don't get bounced around. And then we would go to create an account or create, create an account, create a case. And then as you see, the first one we click is one of the topic. And we'll just choose one like a trash container. And then it's assigned to me. And the simpleness of this is, I put in the numbers of the house and the first three letters. Click, click. There we go. First three numbers, and then the first three letters of the street. And then I just click to the next box. And it automatically accesses the county's program as far as the assessor, and it produces the owner of the property, which is, they're very nice people. They, it gives me all the information that normally I would have to manually enter into it. And it's all there for me, the property description and all the information that I would need. And then I can go back to the case, and it is open. And I click the next box, and the date's today, which I'm opening it today. And the next box, the cross where the circle is, it automatically produces the deadline date of where if it isn't corrected within a certain amount of time, the program notifies me and tells me that, hey, I've given you seven days to correct the problem that you had. And now we go on to the next step. And actually, it shows me my case will turn up in red. And at that point in time, we would change it to open to in violation. And then that way, it would, then the case would turn to green again. And now I produce the document that goes to the magistrate as far as we go to a hearing. And we go, and this is the box where, whether it's code enforcement patrol when we find it or if a neighbor complains about it or a tenant, but most of the time it's code enforcement. And then the property access, it already knows, like I already know because of the name that shows up that it's the owner in there and it's owner occupied. If it would be a different name, then it would tell me it's a tenant occupied. And that changes very little, nothing except our mailing process. We, and you notice the violation, other than a courtesy notice, goes to the owner of the property also. And this is owner occupied. Then we can go down to the actual case, and it was, in this case, it would be a courtesy notice because it would be a first violation. Now also, you see the line that says, above where it says owner or occupant name, there's this property location. If there's been a prior notification sent to that property, it'll tell me right on that line. So if I'm going to something to write, I've already, I've looked at it. And now it says there's two other ones there. That means Roger's already hit it twice for other violations. So I can immediately click on those, and it shows me what he's written it for. And that makes a determination on whether it's a recurring. Because if it's recurring, there's a lot less steps we have to take to get it to the magistrate. So if it, but if it's, but listen, in this case, it's trash, and in this case, it's parking in the grass, and in this case, it's something else, that actually, we would know that. That out. And as a courtesy notice, the date would be today that we're operating at the time. Say seven. Seven 30 a.m. And sent to, that's, I'm just saying that's a trash container dropped too early. Oh, this is, well. My pictures, I'm sorry. But then that, that's my note. That doesn't go to the owner of the property. He doesn't see those. The only one that'll see those would be Roger or I. Or if Boss wanted to access the account, he can see them. But that's, and then we can go down to violations. Click on the violation. And this is actually where it says it's garbage disposal, which means the trash cans were out too early. And then the box opens up underneath there. This is the note, this is the message that I sent to the owner or to the occupant of the owner where it says, your cash can only be in. What was I saying? Twelve hours prior. And I'm just saying, your trash can can only be in public view 12 hours prior to the pickup. And then, and at that point in time, I'm still sitting in front of the address. Now this, when I'm on my tablet, I can do this in a lot less time than I'm doing it here. But I can go to attachments, which there's zero. And where's?
Your tablet gives you a camera function?
Yeah, it didn't do it. I tried, yeah, the tablet gives me a camera function where I can choose a photograph or take a photograph or, and then later on, you can do add to it and go back to it. And it would, like say, five days later, I go back and check it again. And if I had trash out there, now somebody else has put more trash out there. Now it's added to it. At that point in time, I save an update because all of the stuff that I need for my violation is on there. Then I go to print letters. And here's the letter that I just created. And these other ones that you see on there are other ones that I've already written. And they're pending adjudication. So we'll click on that one, and we're going to print the select item.
It's not going.
That's because I'm on the laptop. But it would create, what's my, it would actually create the document that I would send to them. And it would include a photograph to forward to them if they so choose to do so. And once I hit print letters. Oh, it's blocking the pop-up is what it's doing.
Just go to your main screen, buddy.
What's that?
Just go to the main screen, you have the pictures. So bottom line.
Where?
The main screen with the pictures. So bottom line, what you saw there, all that data was so time-consuming prior to this product that it took a visit, a phone call, back to the office, go to the records, get up the county assessor data, all that stuff. And it took a case that usually took about almost two days worth of work to get to the point of hitting print on a letter.
And all that had been entered manually. And most of it takes care of us right now.
Yeah.
And now what would happen is that letter that we serve to the actual individual would be generated, and that's what would normally be shown to me. And once I hit print, that's it. I cannot go back and change the report. I cannot go back to change anything in the report. I can go back and edit and add two other photographs and other information that I need. But nothing can be changed about that report, so it's in there. And now here's the other thing, too. We no longer have, when I do a report, there's four copies that I have to print. There are several documents that I have to print as far as affidavits of serving it, affidavits of posting it, and that all take paper. Now this goes to the cloud. I don't, you don't see a piece of paper. The only piece of paper you see is the one I send to them. Everything else is in our cloud. So we're saving, actually saving five or six pages or so that would take to do a report. And now it's down to one, and that's mailed away. So, and in the process of this, we've got boxes and boxes and boxes from years past that we've had to save that are all across, it's being scanned to that same cloud. So if in the event that we would have to go back and access that, we can access any of that through our tablets. If Boss says he wants to know what happened four years ago at 3212 Monza, I can just tell him that they were nice people and it didn't happen. But you could, I could go back to the cloud and pull that up, and he could have it in a matter of seconds. Good use of today's technology.
Very good. Very good. It's paid off. That's good, Bob, thanks. It's paid off. It's going to continue to pay off. It gives us a historical record. It gives us a tool that we could sit with either a complaintant or a supervisor. If you have a specific concern of something, a parcel, we can sit with you and you see the historical record very simply. It also speeds up the process of the notification, the compliance, the product, everything going on there. So well worth the $2,000 it costs to get. I have iPads with both code guys. I have iPads with the administrative assistant that can go out on mission if needed. I have an iPad that when I tool around, and if I see something, I hit the complaint button. And we're eventually going to migrate to weekend as well as some of the security guys that we can train them to be additional eyes out there to help with this, at least start the packet. If they notice something that's out of the norm and they know it's wrong, they start it. Then when my two code guys come into play, they're able to refine that packet very quickly and get it into the system for a potential magistrate court. That's not the goal, but that is the hammer we have as a district that we will continue to enforce. So just wanted you to be aware, there's a lot of digital background to this, and we are using it. Yes, I hear some concerns of, I got, there's still problems that I got. It takes a little bit to turn a battleship. Give us some time, we will get it adjusted. We have the right people in place. We're going to get the folks out there. And over time, we will enforce the rules that we have in Son of Lake to the betterment of us all. That's why people choose to live here. Yeah, that's the documents that will come out. That's what we put in the mail. There's still a mailing function in it with certified letters and so on. But we're really down to 90 to 100 cases a month are generated for action. And we're down to maybe three, four, five, six at a magistrate court right now. So we knock out 95% of those with compliance. And then we're down to the few that really want to push us to magistrate court. And so far, we've been in the positive in every magistrate decision to our benefit. And that will put lanes on properties, fines, and that type of stuff. They're usually, you know, renters, landlords that aren't being very responsive to us. And they're going to have to pay the fine or the fee or foot lanes. So just want to get you aware of that.
Very good. Coral, do you have anything?
No.
Is that you?
Ask her. I just wanted to add real quickly, we discussed some of the events we've been having. I also wanted to give mention to the Mary Market event that we helped last weekend, which was a very successful event. And that was actually initiated by someone out in the community and who was the company or partner with us. And our turnout was great. Our vendors said it was one of the best events they've participated in this year. So we'd like to continue doing more events like that.
Good, great, very good.
Good, great, very good.
I got a question. Craig, or Craig, Liza, the, I forgot to ask earlier, the work, or the, in the parking lot of the restaurant? Just we have a lot of fun.
Trees debris?
Yeah, I don't want you turned in by the code enforcement, so.
I got you.
Is that a future, I mean, it's been a long time, man.
That, that, we're taking on the movement of that. I didn't want to pay KDL to move that stuff. It was generated by a combination of us and them. Bob and his crew will get some of our dump trucks to start moving that stuff over the holidays as we had time to do that. So that's tied to that cleanup around the area, so we are addressed with that.
Good, because if that's since we got rid of that.
Yeah.
That area looks nice, but it's
No, we'll get it. We'll get on.
Okay, follow up items?
We've got two very quick, sir. You got it on your screen in your packet. The Florida Association of Special Districts, there's a, there's legislative action going through the motions now, just for awareness. This is the, some of the language in that legislative action. We'll be able to provide some feedback to not only our, our folks here at FASD, but also our legislators moving forward. The positives here is specifically targeted against special districts. The positives, I call positives. They're saying, they're wanting to set, the states wanting to set some term limits for y'all. They want to set, they want to enforce at a higher level, the state level, that we as a district have some proper goals and objectives and performance measures that we owe to our citizens. I'm a big fan of that, so I'm not worried about that. We're going to do that, we will do that. The negatives is that if you read some of the language in here, there's two things that stick out. Is that if there's any appetite to convert to a city in the future by whatever committee or board, this law would put some limitations that it would have to be state driven, not resident driven. So that's a concern, takes a little power out of our, our hands. If it goes through, I think that one's going to kind of get washed away once with all the feedback we're getting right now. One that's more interesting is that right now, we as a district, were created fifty years ago with the power to provide assessments and manage those on a yearly basis. Here the state's wanting to inject that every ten years, there needs to be a referendum of the community to allow that ability. That's a concern. Because that could go the other way. And, and I see that changing, or I see that one being watered down. Because what that could, worst case scenario could happen is that you have a community that says, you know what? We don't want to do assessments anymore. Well, then the, then the district can't function and then the county is going to have to take it over. So I see that one, that's a challenging one, that's hard for the cell. But that's the concerning one because more so for us, I don't think it's going to, it'd be impactful. This is, the issue here is the water districts, fire districts. They're really screaming because you could have a citizen uprising to get rid of them. And now they don't have that service anymore. You get rid of the fire district, you don't have fire coverage anymore. And then same with us, you get rid of the district, ability to put assessments out. We can't generate revenue, we can't provide the services. Now I have citizens out here with no services. So that's a concerning one, they're going to change some of the language in there, I think. But just wanted you to be aware, this is in the very infancy. It's got to go through a lot of steps in the state legislature to get to the governor's desk. But it is, it is moving forward. They just had a meeting last week, they all voted to move it to the next level. So at least at the legislative level, there's an appetite to continue this. We need to, through our, you know, our Florida Association of Special Districts, you all having discussions with legislators, make it aware that we are not fans of this. It's tying the hands of the district. And we would recommend a, a change of language, but there are some good things in it. Just wanted you to be aware of that. A second initiative, we're working with our county friends, the re-energizing of the recycling plant discussion. Well, I'm sorry, before I get there. This is a situation awareness. This is next to the U-Haul going into Tanglewood. This is the mobile manufactured home, I'll use the right word. This is the, the business owner that bought the land, so U-Haul's to the, to the right of that picture. Tanglewood's to the left of that picture. You're looking south of Tanglewood Drive there. This is a manufactured home seller. So those parcels in there are not homesites. That's his models that he's wanting to sell to either folks in Tanglewood or anywhere in the county. He's, he's got more permission to approve continued construction, that he's doing two cul-de-sacs. It's off of Tanglewood, so we're just into planning with him. Once established, there'll be assessment fees, that's the initial right now, based on what he's showing us. And then obviously permitting fees, he pays to the district that much. And then he's, he's on the rolls of, of active assessments as well as county taxes. So it's a good business to have in our district. It's very low maintenance for us. They're building everything, there's no cost to the district right now for anything. So I just wanted you to be aware that you're going to see that slowly popping up. He is also the owner of the land north. So if you drive down twenty-seven, you see a lot of the construction equipment. They have the proper permits from us to clear the land and to get the retention pond set. But right now he has not provided any information of what he's going to build there. We will be involved in that discussion if it's something against what we want. But we in the county will be involved in that discussion, but just be advised at the same moment.
Can you send that out to us?
Yes, yes. This is the recycling plant. So this discussion has come back by the county. They've gotten a lot of interest that they need a recycling center closer to us to service our people, our district. So we have a Sebring one, we have the Avon Park one, we have a Lake Lastin one. The county is wanting to re-energize our interests. Do we want one within our district and where that would be? So this has been resurfaced from a previous discussion about a year ago maybe, that going into our public works facility, that driveway, they thought of that parcel right there would be of interest to them. And what you see in the picture is what they're basically doing. This is a manned site. And I say manned, it's supervised by the county. There's not a person living there. It's a bunch of, you know, receptacles. They are covered. And it'll be open for a period of time. And they will be responsible for cleaning it, emptying the dumpsters. If there's a problem with the fence and so on, they are responsible as a county. We are now discussing of where would be the best place to put it. Their requirements are they would recommend it be under observation, they call. We have some other locations in our district. We have up on the north side entrance. We have potentially way out towards, you know, the new wastewater plant. We have other options. So I'm discussing right now where, I just wanted to show you what's on the table right now.
This curb on the backside of the driving range, is it right?
Uh, this will be on the backside of the driving range.
Yeah, I told you.
But as I say, there's, there's other locations that I'm having meetings with the county of where we would rather it go. This is where they last talked to the district and was recommended. And you, you got, I'm talking with you. I'm just reaching, I'm saying this is the only county plan that they have.
Right.
So structurally, it'd be the same site. Where we put it is up to us.
I thought we turned down anything in Son of Lake. And we were told by Scott that the hospital was
Well, the hospital to the extent they want it on frontage road somewhere, not really the hospital, but frontage road on parcels either owned by the hospital or owned by us. That's, that's the discussion right now. So all I bring this up is they want to put a recycling center. If you all tell me you don't want a recycling center, then I stop the discussion right now with the county.
I believe the one, what we talked about, we looked at the frontage road and said that that was a viable place.
Yeah.
But I believe we have a strategy for it.
Where, on the north side where they, where we recommend, yes, yes. We have some parcels closer down near the unit four, potential. Their, their concern is it's under observation. We can answer under observation by a camera, by something like that that they pay for, not us. So we're willing to, to answer it that way. And I can put it at a different location because we have a camera monitoring system that if you buy the camera, we'll monitor it, it's under observation. So the location is immaterial right now. That's why they picked this spot because they know we drive by every day. So it would be under observation. But I'm not a fan of this spot at all because of its location.
Firstly, if it was out by
Yep.
Off the frontage road. I thought, I think we all thought that was somewhat acceptable. But I'm thinking that if was knocked down because of conservation problems.
We, we can sort through that because we have other parcels around there that's acceptable, yeah.
I am one vote disagreeing.
Yeah.
And I don't want to know.
You don't want a recycling center whatsoever. Okay. I got you.
But I would like to know what happened to the hospital, kind of.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll find out.
Do we, or you know how well the other facility they have are maintained?
They are, they, they are maintained pretty aggressively. And based on where they're located, if you have an interested party, i.e. the district, that we can pick up a phone and say, send your guys out here to empty the dumpsters. That's the biggest issue they had is dumpsters are getting filled and there's not a recurring empty plan. Based on where it's located and because our guys will drive by it all the time, there'll be a phone call away to say, empty the damn dumpster. Irregards to where they put it, I'm wanting higher fences and I'm wanting screen fences. So it's totally obscured. I don't, I don't want it to be totally visible, other than a sign that says recycling center. So there's some requirements.
Could you get the locations of the Sebring and the Avon Park ones?
I, I'll send you, that's just a picture, I'll send you the actual location. Yes, sir. Yeah, we can do that. Okay. Okay, yeah, we'll get confirmation on the fiscal manning. There may be a guy checking.
There's so many. So many.
I, I'm just getting a lot because of the county eliminating the recycling option for our residents. And because of the density of our residents, I think if it's the right spot, it's a beneficial asset to have within our community in some way. As long as it's the right spot. I think a lot of folks locally would use it. My concern, if you place it too closer to twenty-seven, it's not going to be used by our, our district. It's going to be used by anybody driving by with the dumpster all. That's a concern of mine. But we have to pick the right spot where it's really for the 10,000 plus residents of the district.
But if it's manned, they can only put recyclables.
Yes, sir. If it's manned, physically manned where not just a gate open, then that, that concern goes away, but I need that in writing from the county that they're hiring somebody five days a week to sit there. So, more to follow. Just giving you, we're having discussions right now of where and what it kind of looks like.
Liza, I think you're all in favor. I am.
Yeah.
The locations are, you've got to be careful where you put that.
Uh, with, yeah.
I'm surprised it come back. I mean, I thought we took care of it.
Yeah.
And so now here it is again.
But it, it seems like the hospital is not a fan of putting it on their
I don't blame them.
Not mostly, we will have these discussions. And that's the only two add-ons I got, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, audit. In your packet, you should have the audit. This was the 2022 audit. This was just a, a catch-up of administrative functions. We gave them, we gave them, infomart, our, our accounts. All the data required to close out our 22 legal required audit. No major concern, no concerns whatsoever, other than the recurring issues they bring up with making sure we have oversight, make sure we don't have the same person write the check list. You know, approving the check, we have all those control measures. So this was from last year. Right now, we're probably in the last thirty days of closing out 2023. Coral will get with Infomart, we'll get that to you, you'll be approving that audit. So this is just for situation awareness, it's posted on the website. It meets the state requirements and it's interesting reading material if you really want to get it. That's it, sir.
Okay. Discussion two on the board. I have one. I should have brought this up probably earlier, but the landlord meeting never takes very much time. But it could, but most of it is if and factors, an actual election, then it validates and then ballots, et cetera, takes time. Most of the time it's very little. I'm wondering if we could just combine our business meeting, which we have scheduled for January 23rd, with mandated that we have it on a Friday for the landowners meeting, which I think we could look at in the future to maybe change. But to go ahead and have that, and what we've done as before where we have our business meeting, we put the business meeting in suspension, have the landowners meeting, let them do their thing, and then we go back into session for the business. It seemed to me that, you know, we're, we would meet on the 23rd and then again on the 26th. It would just seem to me that it would be a good thing to go ahead and combine these two meetings. I don't know how the rest of these feel about it.
If we have two, two more candidates on the board. I remember what happened several years ago. I went home for three and a half, four hours and then I came back. Because they were counting votes, they have to go through a procedure, tally all the votes. It's just time consuming. So if there's one candidate, I think we can do it. If there's two candidates or more.
Okay, we don't know that, so let's just move on. They don't know how many candidates we're going to have.
Yeah, we don't.
If there were two, wait, if there's only one, we'll know next week, you guys can
You know by Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, we put out the five, the official
Yeah, well, the 22nd is the last day to take the amount.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying is if it's only one candidate, then your idea will solve it, that's fine.
Okay, you're saying, let's go ahead and you have to provide your deal.
Yeah. If that's, if that's what you want. I got, if that's consensus, I need time to make sure, because we've noticed this. We put it out. Let me sit down with counsel, make sure legally we can do it, quick change like that.
I thought it was a two week.
Yeah, yes, sir. I think we can make that happen. I just want to, rather than you say, do it now and me come back and say, forget it. If, if you all want us to do that, give me some time to research.
If there's only one candidate.
Okay.
Would you please look into signing that meeting?
Okay. You all good with that? Okay. I'll get you an answer very quickly once we talk with legal on this.
It was easy before because they're meeting on Friday.
Sure, okay.
I got you.
Yeah, I, I don't think they're really supporting that, I think.
Okay.
Read this answer back quick.
Any other discussion sort of from the board? Motion to adjourn? Motion? Getting adjourned.